(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
So we're going to start this meeting again. We're on page two, item three, which is announcements from mayor. The only announcement that I'm going to make today is in regards to the amount of the few fires that we've been having. And just want to remind the public, especially in that previous cold snap that we had with pipes freezing, with extra electrical cords, space heaters, Christmas trees, Christmas lights, everything else, the risk for fire goes up substantially and people have to be aware of what they're doing and how they're doing it. And I want to pass out my congratulations to Chief Gerard and his crew and volunteers that have done an admirable job of putting these fires out. And a knock on wood, we have not had any loss of life. But again, remind the public, and I'm asking the media to make a note of it, is to really think about fire safety at this time of year, especially with this cold weather. And looking for a motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor Nixon, Counselor Orlando, all those in favor. And I need a motion to adopt the regular council minutes of December 6th. Counselor Duke makes the motion. Counselor Brothers second. All of us in favor. Is there any business arising from the minutes of that meeting on December the 6th? We have no delegations' presentations and no more public hearings today. Moving into recommendations of the meeting of all, finance.
Your worship, hovering forward that the previously awarded grant made of $1,300 for the Rebelstoke Minor Hockey Association Hockey Camp be reconfirmed by council and that the grant take the form of a credit to be used against the cost of ice rental at the arena for their preseason hockey schools and such credit have no cash value.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Salz. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor. Motion's carried. Administration purchasing and tendering policy, Counselor Brothers.
The purchasing and tendering policy we amended to provide that each director and manager should provide a corporate credit card with a credit limit of $10,000 to be used to bona fide city expenses.
Motion by Counselor Brothers, seconded by Counselor Salz. Discussion. All those in favor. Motion's carried. RCMP letter regarding presentation available. Counselor Brothers.
That meeting be scheduled with appropriate staff in the RCMP Corporate Management and Controllership branch and that city staff compile a list of items for discussion.
Motion by Counselor Brothers, seconded by Counselor Salz. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor. Motion's carried. All business. Council procedure by law. Counselor Brothers.
The council procedure by law 2135 be read first, second, and third time.
Motion by Counselor Brothers, seconded by Counselor Salz. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor. Motion's carried.
I can move 9B, the zoning amendment by law 2158 be adopted.
Motion by Counselor Duke, seconded by Counselor Nixon. Discussion. All those in favor. Motion's carried.
I also move that heritage revitalization agreement by law 2159 be adopted.
Motion by Counselor Duke, seconded by Counselor Nixon. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor. Motion's carried. Counselor Brothers.
Move forward 10A, that Counselor Nixon be appointed to the Okunodin Regional Library Board of Directors to represent the city of Rebelstoke and further to appoint Counselor Orlando, Aaron Orlando as an alternate.
That's it.
Yes, that's it, yes.
Move by Counselor Brothers, seconded by Counselor Salz. Discussion on the motion. This is just reaffirming the appointments that we've had previously. All those in favor. Motion's carried.
My brief appearance will now end. I won't go far, I'll just stay here.
Your worship, hovering forward that the application to rezone 305 Fourth Street East and legal description in your packages to rezone from R2 Single and Two Family Residential District to R2 B Single and Two Family Residential Vacation Rental District be approved.
Move by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Salz. And we have a presentation, Mr. Strachan. Discussion on that.
Very briefly, your worship. This particular application has been in progress for some time. Legal law issues has held it up. So the number is quite a ways in the sequence. It's Zone 29, so the application came in quite some time ago. So we've been processing and working with the owner to address that issue. We're very forward now as a vacation rental for a, speaking worship, two-bedroom, I believe. Three, your worship, sorry. On one and a half lots, your worship, has the issue that created a bit of a legal conundrum for us in the matter of all at 305 Fourth Street East, again, your worship.
And motion seconded and approved. And item number two.
We have a folder on the first time, your worship.
Okay. Motion's on the floor and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor. Motion's carried.
And item two, that zoning by law number 2142 be read the first and second time and staff be directed to schedule a public hearing.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Salz. Discussion. All in favor. Motion's carried. And we're moving into item C, which is zoning amendment by law 2166, Vacation Rental 1889J Place. And Mr. Strachan, you have a presentation on this one.
Our slides are broken at this moment, your worship. We're locked up. This vacation rental is noted as 1889J Place. Vacation rental is for a three-bedroom home. Only two bedrooms are proposed to be rented out as part of the vacation rental with two vehicle parking spaces provided. Thank you, your worship.
Your worship, hovering forward that the application to rezone 1889J Place, description legally in your packages, from R3 Medium Density Multi-Family Residential District to R3B Medium Density Multi-Family Residential Vacation Rental District be approved.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Orlando. Discussion on the motion, Counselor Nixon.
Your worship, this is part of that same area, Hopper Columbia Park. And I don't wish to support this going forward. I feel that the neighborhood should be up for rental and ownership where the families are older people and have a place to rent.
I agree, and I have concerns that I stated at the earlier public hearing. I think that the houses are too close together, the density is too high, the roads are narrow, and I think that we're just looking at more problems. And I'm not going to vote in favor of this movement forward. Is there other comments from council on this? You have a motion and seconded, right? Yeah. Counsel-- yeah, Mr. Strachan.
Your worship, in the head, the council does not approve this to go forward this time. The applicant will be refunded the $300 in the processing process.
Any other comments from council? Counselor Salz.
Your worship, I thought this echoed what people already said earlier in the previous application that this should remain, there's not enough parking, et cetera. So I would support this going forward and it should be a benefit to the opponent.
Is there any more discussion on this motion? Motion is for this application to go forward at 1889J Place for vacation rental. All those in favor? Against. Motion is denied. We're now moving into item D, which is zoning amendment by law 2167, Vacation Rental at 1065 McCarty Crescent. Do we have a presentation on this one, Mr. Strachan?
We do, your worship. Nice. Very briefly, your worship, as noted, we have a vacation rental application, McCarty Crescent, this particular application is for a four-bedroom vacation rental. Applicants have applied for the full home to be done as a vacation rental house. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Strachan.
Your worship, hovering forward that the application to rezone 1065 McCarty Crescent Lot, the further legal description in your packages, from R1 Single Family Residential District to R1B Single Family Residential Vacation Rental District be approved.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by somebody. Counselor Brothers. Discussion on the motion. I think that, you know, this is another area town which we're going to have to be watching and deciding how dense we want to make vacation rental. You had your hand up?
(Inaudible).
Where was that? I just think that the comments that we're getting at these public hearings are, I think, are helping give staff direction on what we're looking for, what is acceptable to the community, the local community, the neighborhood, and to the city and council. And I think that, like I said earlier, this is going to be an area that is starting to see a lot more vacation rental, and we're going to have to see how that plays out. The nice thing about this property is it's right next door to a big green space, but the neighborhood is still underbuilt and there is lots of activity going on. But any other comments from council? All those in favor.
Now you-- oh, sorry, sorry, your worship. This is, this McCarty Crescent is another example where we have a legal vacation rental that has created significant issues in the community. It was operating both last season and we're anticipating it's going to be operating again this season despite our efforts. And we're continuing to monitor that property and take action if necessary to deal with it. Again, it's an illegal, unregulated vacation rental that's creating a significant uprising amongst the neighbors and impacting applications to legalize and regulate.
Motion's on the floor. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Do you have a comment?
Just before we go forward and vote, I know that this, this home being a problem, complaints in the neighborhood and parking being an issue and parties and whatnot. So if you have to order and we go forward, I just want to state that I will not push this particular item forward.
Counselor Nixon.
Your worship, that is good information for council to have, that this has been a non-compliant problem house. And I cannot see the neighbors coming out and saying, "Oh yeah, not even a vehicle, we support you." I think that when people are bad neighbors, I just don't think they should ignore them.
Counselor Brothers.
Can I just clarify with Mr. Strachan, was this the problem house or was it another house, problem house in the neighborhood?
I understand that there are parking concerns at this particular property, but there is another house in the neighborhood that I was speaking specifically to, which had significant issues last winter with old parking noise, nuisance in the neighborhood. Both were so obvious as well.
I must be oblivious in the neighborhood because I don't see anything like that. I don't live that far away. I don't-- I don't know where you're going to do this stuff.
Please, 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 your worship.
I must be on my snoring.
If I could just ask for clarification, Counselor Salz, are you talking about that other house or are you talking about this particular house?
I'm talking about this particular house.
Thank you.
Do we have another staff person that can verify that this house has been a problem?
Probably. Well, and I guess, I guess my only comment to this is that, you know, the process that we're going through is we're going, we're going to active enforcement, so we are finding out these places and we are asking them to either cease and desist or become legal. And they're choosing to go through the process. And I'm more inclined to allow it to go through the process and hearing what the neighborhood has to say. And I look at, the reason why I voted the last one down was I look at the physical attributes of the property and how it fits in with the neighborhood. And this one is bigger, bigger lots, empty green space beside it, and there should be lots of room for off-street parking for the vehicles that they're applying for. So I'm a little bit surprised to hear about there's all the problems because actually I walked through here and I've seen vehicles and I've never experienced any, but I'm not, I'm not a next-door neighbor. But I guess I'm inclined to vote in favor of going through process. So, motion's on the floor. And is there any more comments or questions from council on the motion? All those in favor? Against. Motion is carried. Do we have a second part of the motion, Duke?
Yeah.
We're just scheduling a public hearing.
That zoning by law number 2167 be read a first and second time and staff be directed to schedule a public hearing.
Motion by Counselor Brothers, seconded by, seconded by Counselor Nixon. You know, I've had a hard enough day already. Is there any discussion on this motion? All those in favor? Against. Motion's carried. Counselor Salz. We're now into zoning amendment by law 2168, Vacation Rental on 1115, 1115 Montana Place. Mr. Strachan, you have a presentation.
Thank you, your worship. As noted, vacation rental, it's proposed to have the vacation rental in a home with three bedrooms. Oops. Oh, we're back. Two bedrooms with the vacation rental proposed within the secondary suite in the house. So this particular vacation rental, they plan to maintain the residential in the main part of the house with a secondary suite as the vacation rental. Thank you, your worship.
Looking for a motion. With Counselor Orlando.
I move that the application to rezone 1115 Montana Place, Lot 2, Section 25 Township 23, Range 2, west of the Sixth Meridian, Kootenay District Plan, NEP 87727, from R1 Single Family Residential District to R1B Single Family Residential Vacation Rental District be approved.
Motion by Counselor Orlando, seconded by Counselor Salz. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor? Motion's carried.
I'll continue on. I move that zoning by law number 2168 be read a first and second time and staff be directed to schedule a public hearing.
Motion by Counselor Orlando, seconded by Counselor Brothers. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor? Motion's carried. And we're moving into the next one, which is Perks Drive. And Mr. Strachan, you have a presentation on this one.
Thank you, your worship. As noted, our vacation rental to be located on Perks Drive. Table 37.
You never have to speak to it either.
Thank you, your worship. Property currently has two bedrooms with a one-bedroom secondary suite. Location on it, sorry, my apologies. The secondary suite is again in this application proposed for vacation rental to be three vehicle parking spaces available. As noted with other applications, the parking spaces when you have a suite and the main part of the house have to be both accessible at the same time. So you can't have one vehicle for the vacation rental blocked by the residence vehicles. So that's why you see this demonstrated in the package. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Strachan. Is anybody prepared to put a motion on the floor? Counselor Brothers.
That the application to rezone 273 Perks Drive, Lot 58, and as you had in the package, from R1 Single Family Residential District to R1B Single Family Residential Vacation Rental District be approved.
Motion by Counselor Brothers, seconded by Counselor Nixon. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion's carried.
And two, that zoning by law number 2169 be read first and second time and staff be directed to schedule a public hearing.
Motion by Counselor Brothers, seconded by Counselor Nixon. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion's carried. And we're moving into Development Services, the-- oh, yes. Mr. Strachan, you have a presentation on the Oxford Street City Property.
Your worship, as noted, I reported to council, I was asked to look at the potential highest and best use for the subject property, which is located on Oxford Street. It's a large parcel of land, a city-owned land, which has had a couple of projects take place on it, one being a duplex constructed by the Housing Society, as well as recently a 12plex at the bottom of the subject property, as well as that corner was taken off of the property for the ambulance station. So we began an analysis process of looking at the previous plans for the property. And there's two or three plans, I believe actually three, that were prepared. The third one I've never seen, but the two that I've seen were completed by consulting planners. And it's been reported that the plans were problematic. It's not actually the case. I think the actually, the two plans are solid planning plans for residential development. I feel the two consultants did exactly what they were tasked to do, which is to prepare a residential plan for the property. Not necessarily a residential plan for today. So the time and the prospect of growth in Rebelstoke at the time those plans were prepared is very different than where we're at today. Their projections at that point in time, which you see reflected in the OCP, are a growth that would have us at over 15,000 population right now, whereas we're at 7,000, it'll change. So it's a different world today than it was at that time. 2008 helped us with that. And so we've prepared a plan based on more of what we're seeing today as far as growth. We're going to break 40 for single-family homes this year, which is significant for Rebelstoke. We haven't seen that many single-family homes. But we are going to see multifamily this year. So we're not seeing a significant growth in that area, mostly in that there's been a bit of a latent pressure for single-family homes. Lot prices shifted this summer and we saw people go. The rental market is reflecting that change. But now we need to see some multifamily in the community, and hopefully we see that. So we do identify some opportunities for some multifamily development on this site potentially. We have infrastructure that's been put in place with the affordable housing projects along Oscar Street. So that infrastructure now exists, so the opportunity for additional duplex or other component adjacent to the ambulance station is there, as well as there's an opportunity to extend the roadway that was previously constructed as a laneway off the bottom of the subject property. You can continue that through, as well as begin the process of looking at the infrastructure plan for it. There's some grant opportunities or identified through economic development that could be pursued, that potentially could provide some funding towards doing those plan works. So that that is shell-ready. You have actual parcels of land that the infrastructure's been designed for, the knowing the costs of those pieces of infrastructure. So you've hit the ground a little bit more running than we had in the past and potentially could look at two different parcels along a new street that could carry some additional residential components to them. Another component is you've got a trail that's acting as a pedestrian road through the subject property. You may want to do that and continue that in the future. Probably the most important component of this plan is the big green blob in the middle. It's a large parcel of land. It's got significant characteristics to it. It is adjacent to an industrial park. It's adjacent to residential. It's a bridging property. It's got infrastructure in close proximity. It's good proximity to the highway, good proximity to the rail service. It's got all the different components that could be a whole bunch of different things. So what we've recommended to council is this property has so many potential opportunities for the future that it should be held in reserve at this time and not to make a plan for it, but wait to see what the future holds for it. Because the current growth of residential in the community, we're not going to need this land for approximately 10, 15 years. So hold on to it and treasure it because it may be something that you're going to need if somebody comes to town looking to do a development that's going to offer employment opportunities, high-tech industrial or some other use like that, that isn't conducive with being in a full residential neighborhood. You may be able to carve a piece off of this or have this whole piece be that opportunity. And as a, adjacent to industrial, that would work very well here. It is also large enough to have a significant recreational facility placed there if it's needed in the future. So there's lots of opportunities here. And it may very well be that the growth of Rebelstoke is, this is just the beginning. And in the future, it's needed for residential growth. Again, being in reserve, there's that opportunity there. But to specifically put it into a smart at this point in time, it's not recommended to do that at this point. Thank you, your worship.
Okay. We have a, I think the first motion is to receive.
Yes, I can.
Counselor Duke.
Yep. That the proposed land use for plan for the city-owned land in 1004 Oscar Street be received.
Motion by Counselor Duke, seconded by Counselor Nixon. Discussion. Counselor Brothers, Counselor Nixon, and I'm going to jump in.
I'm appreciative of this, Mr. Strachan, because I think it gives us some direction for the highest best use for some portion of the land, but it does leave the door open for us to find out where we're going in Rebelstoke and what's going to happen. So I like this and I certainly will support it.
Counselor Nixon.
I also like the district that we've left for access corridor, perhaps bike convenience and perhaps even children's park could be, small park could be integrated in there for low-income housing families to use. And I really think that hanging on to this is good because this might leave the door open for other, outside the service industry. We need to have diverse jobs in Rebelstoke and allow this third generation that lives here in Rebelstoke to become the fifth generation. And this piece of land like that that will play a role, I think, in the future of Rebelstoke for light industry, yeah, not just people working out of their homes.
I was on city council a long time ago when we purchased this land, and we purchased it for a variety of reasons, but to have some control. So I've been looking at this property for about 25 years. Okay? And I keep hearing about this, we got to keep it and do this. Well, you know what? We're not doing anything. We pieced off a few pieces to help out the ambulance station and the Affordable Housing Society. We formed, when I was previously mayor, we formed an Affordable Housing Society because we knew that with the resort coming, that there was going to be problems. It was the number one issue that we were warned about. And guess what? We have an affordable housing problem. Probably, probably the number one issue in the last election, the previous election, and the election before that. And it's something that every council has been concerned about. It's something that the community is really concerned about. And when we formed the Affordable Housing Society, the council of the day said that they were going to make this property available for the Housing Society to help them mitigate affordable housing. And I wish I was sitting And I wish I was sitting here telling you about all the affordable housing that we created, but affordable housing is difficult to create. We have provincial and federal government today that are recognizing the problems with affordable housing and are stepping up to the plate and helping communities with affordable housing. I'm just worried that when we take this property, that I think the Affordable Housing Society sees it as, that this is property that they're being made available. And I understand good planning is, don't take a base piece of property and add one-hundred percent of it to affordable housing. The idea is mixed-use densities and that's good planning. But I think that the Housing Society sees, has a different view of this property. And I think that, I support this motion of receiving it, but I think that we should be contacting the Housing Society, seeing how they feel about the property. Because I sure wouldn't want them or the community thinking that this council doesn't support affordable housing, because I know that they do. So I don't want to see us do a whole bunch of things and excluding what some people view as the biggest issue in this town and one of the, I don't know if I like the word, most important committees in this town. But the community is expecting us to make advances in affordable housing and I wish we had made more. But we have to be careful how this property gets used. And it's, it's, I think is a catalyst and a stepping stone to create more affordable housing. And I want to make sure I don't support us losing that opportunity. And so I'm concerned about the next motions, but I'm going to be suggesting that after we receive it, that the Affordable Housing Society gets a copy of it and gets talked to about what their vision is.
Oh, Counselor Brothers, Duke, and then Solz.
I agree with you entirely, your worship. And my understanding of that big blob, that green blob, is that that's, it's available and open for those types of suggestions or proposals or that type of thing. If I'm wrong, please advise. But I think affordable housing needs to have some input as to what they see going forward is necessary for the community, because that's what they're there for, so.
Mr. Strachan.
Your worship, as Counselor Brothers has alluded to, to carry this property strictly, you would have been carrying the previous plans, is to look at this property for residential purposes only. A variety of residential, let's say that. However, there isn't the growth in the community to support having that much land allocated for residential at this point in time here. So the proposal is just to keep the door open for this property because the growth isn't going to require that land for affordable or marketplace housing in the near future. We've got allocations for over thirty units here with those smaller pieces of the property, which gives you a context on how big this piece of land is. The whole objective of this was to get to something that could be real today, so that we could apply for a grant to get some infrastructure design completed. So we had self-shelf-ready projects. So when there is an opportunity for federal and provincial funding, you can then go forward with the project and already have the engineering completed, have the survey. You can have those pieces that take significant periods of time and quite often follow the line with granting. Those grant applications usually come with, hey, what do you got that's shelf-ready because we got money extra, let's go. And this would give you that opportunity to do that, there's identifying funding that may be available to do that infrastructure planning at this point. But to carry that through for the entire site is almost a waste of money at this point in time. Because by the time you've got to those components at the very far end of their residential development, you're speaking to fifteen, twenty years down the road. The requirements for engineering and design are going to significantly change. The bylaws are going to have changed. The community's needs and desires at that point will likely have changed too. So this is not a proposal to reserve this for an industrial development or any development of any specific type. But more so just recognize that there is other opportunities and to recognize that there may be a potential to give other councils an opportunity to deal with an emerging issue in the community at the time they need it. Whereas today, we don't need this land at this point.
Counselor Duke.
Yeah, my thoughts were, or my understanding was that Area D was being left open for future development as it was necessary. And that we have allocated Area C, B, and Area A for low-income housing, for affordable housing.
Well, it's for housing.
Yeah, for any housing, for sure. So I, I'm comfortable with it the way it is because there's a lot of space to develop there. And then if you decide, okay, after we've developed all of that, which you're probably looking at least five years out, even maybe longer. And then at that point, there'll be a council of the day and they'll say, okay, let's use some of this Area D because we need more housing. Or they'll say, well, no, we need more industrial.
Mr. Strachan.
Your worship, this, this plan reflects, it isn't absent of consultation. We've heard from the Housing Society as well as from other groups in the community, the need for these types of developments. The pieces that are put here, A, B, and C, are reflective of that. The Housing Society has indicated they wish to go forward with another project in the future. They could go with C, or they could go with A, which is a smaller project that's more piecemeal. And C is reflective of the latest conversations, or B, excuse me, on the corner, more reflective of recent conversations of low-income housing. So council isn't setting themselves in stone for anything on A, B, C, or D, or even E. It's just, it's a point to start discussion with the community when the time comes as to what direction is on this at this point in time. So none of this is proposed to be included into zoning or into any other piece. It's just to give you a platform for discussion for the community to have an understanding of where you guys are sitting with this land. Because it's been asked on numerous occasions as to what this plan is for this particular parcel.
Well, and I guess my frustration, Dean, is that this is the third plan that I've seen of it. And, you know, every iteration with the current planner of the day has been what they've supported. So this is the third one. But my concern is that this plan hasn't been seen by the Housing Society. And the reason why the Housing Society was set up is to give advice to council on everything to do with housing in the community. And I know that there's a high degree of frustration that they go out and they do a plan and it's great and they work towards it, but there is, there's no money, there's no money. We don't have a budget line item for the Housing Society. Then we go to Plan Two, which is a reiteration of Plan One, because the next planner that came in didn't like Plan One, so we did Plan Two. And now we're on Plan Three. I just, and I'm not saying that I don't like it. I, I would rather see things being built and things happening to help people with affordable housing more than what we're doing. And all I'm saying is, before we start moving down this path, we should have a conversation with the Housing Society so they can see the plan and they can provide comments back. So I'm okay with motion number one. I don't think that we should do anything else after that until the Housing Society becomes involved. That's what I'm getting at.
Counselor Solz, Edger Hamlin.
Your worship, I read through Mr. Strachan's report and I have a couple of questions, several questions, but in support of what you're saying about receiving the report. My, my first question, and you may have answered some of these already, but this land, was it not, when it was purchased, not all allocated to the housing, Community Housing Society for, for housing as, as we needed, as we went along?
Your worship, my understanding is at one point it was allocated to the Housing Society at the time to, excuse me, come up with a strategy and a plan for developing the site. Unfortunately, those plans did not come through and that contract ended and it's reverted back to the city at first. It has remained as such since that time as a city-owned parcel. The last piece for development on Osser Street has been leased to the Housing Society. It's a remainder city parcel. It is a long-term lease for this component. The duplex component was sold to the Housing Society. The ambulance station, I believe, was sold to the property.
Well, and I, and I guess, you know, having gone through the last project from start to finish with the Housing Society, it was, it was leased because there was been so many delays that we were told that leasing the property would be faster than buying it. And BC Housing, who was putting up a lot of money, didn't care either way. As it ended up, it took longer, I think, to go through the lease process than actually purchasing it. But the society in the past did purchase the property for the duplex. But I, I guess fundamentally, when everything washes to the bottom, all the projects are owned by the city. The Housing Society, like, the Housing Society can't take it and then sell the project and then divide the money amongst the directors and carry on. It's, these are all city projects. They're all being done for the community. And I just want to make sure that we're not losing, losing it. I don't know, Alan, do you want to add anything to what's going on?
No, I mean, it was part of a contract placed between the city and the Housing Society for land. One of the housing studies earlier, the recommendation to council was that the land bank this area, put it aside for affordable housing. And then the Housing Society and this committee to give council recommendations about development. And that's kind of what's happened and stumbled along and built it. You know, it's always been the operation of the city, the city's ownership of the land, so.
Mr. Strachan.
Your worship, my understanding in 2007 was a contract.
Well, all I know is that, when I was mayor before, the, the deal was that this property would be made available for the Housing Society to help with affordable housing. And in the early years, it was so difficult to find any kind of money. There was no real budget from, from the city to help the committee. And there was all kinds of ideas of what we were going to do. We were going to create affordable ownership. And because of grants from BC Hydro and then from BC Housing and CBT, we were actually able to provide affordable rental projects, which we actually in the very start never thought that we'd be able to provide. So we've been at the whim of whatever grants that we could get has decided what projects that we're going to build. And quite frankly, I don't see that changing unless council decides that it wants to invest a whole pile of money into this property and create affordable housing, which I don't see happening.
Your worship, if council were to pursue that option, I would not recommend that you pursue that option of this property in any way. To concentrate all of your affordable housing in one location in the community would be very problematic. If you were to pursue additional properties for the city to purchase for affordable housing in the future, it should be diverse and it should be through the community. Concentrating any demographic in any location, whether it's financial or otherwise, is very dangerous thing for any community.
And I don't think that was ever the intention, Dean, it was. We understand that, you know, mixed use and mixed density and, but using the property, either you providing it out at market value and then taking that money and then going buy property elsewhere to provide, so you're spreading affordable housing throughout the community, was, was really the idea. But again, it's, I think that we've got to have a conversation with the Housing Society. There's a big change coming there with the board. But I disagree with, with the plan. I, quite frankly, I'm just, I hate to say it, but I'm just tired of seeing different plans all the time over the years. And it's, it gets frustrating from the society's point of view.
Your worship, I would recommend that council consider you're going to have a new planner coming on board. This would be a great exercise for them to go with the community. I would recommend that they don't just go with the Housing Society, the community as a whole. I think there's a lot of options out there. This was not intended to be, by any means, recommending council accept this in stone. This is simply the start of a conversation reflective of some of the things that are currently being kicked around. There's thirty units of proposed development that could take place with this plan. There's lots of ideas in this community, a whole bunch of different things. And there's a lot of agencies that are working in this community in housing, including community connections as well as other social groups that should probably also participate in this discussion as to how, in the long run, affordable housing can be addressed. And the Affordable Housing Committee is probably a very valuable tool to use for implementation. But as far as non-fringe planning for housing in the community, I'm not sure that group is currently tooled to take on that kind of a project. I would recommend that you use your city planner to do that work.
In conjunction with retooling the Housing Society, which is what's happening. Counselor Moe, Edger Hamlin.
Yeah, a couple of comments as well as a question. When I was at UBCM, I attended the Affordable Housing Forum, which was really good. One of the presenters' comments, who had experienced some success in their city, building affordable housing, was, one of their first steps was to do an inventory. I'm aware that we have other properties in other parts of the community all going on. I'm not sure how big they are and where they're at, but that's definitely something I would see. I tend to, just on my knowledge and also on the advice of staff, I don't think putting all of affordable housing over there is a good idea at all. And the other thing I learned at UBCM is that there is, you know, as council is discussing and is aware, there's a lot of money coming right now. But from some of the funding announcements that came out about two weeks ago from the province, seeing what other communities in the counties are getting, small communities are like ours, are somewhere along the line within the boundary of what would be permissible in the red part, I assume, I think, I don't know which letter it is. So, you know, in terms of an immediate plan, setting the groundwork for something, I think this is appropriate. And I don't think planning for a large, all affordable housing development in that areas is the right. My question though is on Part Three, and since we're discussing whether we're going to go ahead and develop it or not, I think this is appropriate. And that is, what are the, you know, it says that staff be requested to budget for the preparation of the infrastructure servicing plan for A, B, and C. I suppose the budgeting of it is going to tell us how much that's going to cost. Do we have any idea of how much this is going to cost and who's going to be paying for it? Is that fact's fair?
Your worship, the idea is to, to get the land ready so it actually could be somewhat shelf-ready. In order to do that, we need to do some infrastructure planning. We don't know what it will cost to do that. We would obviously turn to our city engineer to give council some idea on that. If they were to pass that resolution, as part of the budgeting process, the city engineer would be capable of preparing some sort of line item that would have a dollar value. Then we would go out and seek granting to hopefully cover that dollar value or a portion of it. But we need to budget for the full value for this, this particular purpose. Without working with Mike and having council give sort of some level of support to the plan before having him spend any time on this, he's a busy guy, he should be spending his time elsewhere. So after this process, it would become part of the budgetary process to look and see what he thinks it would cost to have an engineer come in as a consulting engineer and prepare an infrastructure plan. What that does is gives you the underground and your utilities and all your components that you need to be shelf-ready for building permit, completed. More importantly with that, you know the cost of those things. You're not waiting until the project is, is so close to underway that you're finding out big surprises. So this will allow for that process to take place and those things to be known in advance. So when whatever group is doing it, whether it's the Housing Society or another organization in the community, is applying for grant, there's less mysteries to it. There's more certainty. And it's also showing that council's investing in these types of plans for the future. And those usually vote a lot for grant applications as well, and they can see that the community is putting dollars into being ready.
Any other comments? Motion on the floor is to receive.
Hi, your worship. I, absolutely, affordable housing is a big issue that we need to move forward. And I think putting together a concrete plan for our next project, which is reasonable, is of a reasonable size that can be achieved in this parcel is the way we do it.
Okay, that's coming up. So we're talking about receiving the report, is there any other discussion? Call in favor, motion's carried.
I'll bring forward G2. The following land use plan components be considered during review of application for future development of the site. A, land use plans, Area A, B, and C be considered for residential development. B, land use plan, Area D be reserved for future land use considerations. And C, land use plan, Area E be considered for future trail parking.
First by Counselor Duke, second by Counselor Nixon, discussion on the motion. I'll be voting against it. I don't think it's the right thing to do. I think that we should be consulting with the Housing Society before we're presupposing what we're going to be doing here. I know in discussions that I've had with the Equity Development Officer, that we feel that we have people in the wings that are prepared to put money into infrastructure. It's just we have trouble always agreeing on what the plan is going to be. And anyways, I don't think this is the right way to go. Counselor Brothers.
I concur with you, your worship. I concur with you, Your Worship. I, you know, there have been significant discussions within the Housing Committee or the Housing Society about affordable housing and where we go next and what we do and how we do it. And I think that is a worthwhile exercise. I, you know, I think we need to keep moving along. I get what Counselor Mr. Strachan is saying, we need to be prepared for the next project, but I don't think there's anything wrong with moving to the Housing Society for their comments or that type of thing, and seeing where we go with it or what ideas can come out of it, what proposals can be made. So I would like to go that route because I think the Housing Society is sitting there waiting to do that job because that is what their job is, and I think we should let the Housing Society do their job.
Counselor Duke. I don't think this is stopping the Housing Society from doing their job, I think that's what we're going to come up on, but the reality is this is putting stuff into consideration, is literally the word "consideration" here four times. It's the softest, easiest kick through a wall post I've seen, since counsel, since I've sat here. And we know that we want more affordable housing, we know that we have the business community knocking on the gates looking for a place to do this, and all we're doing here is saying, yeah, we want to do this, and we're going to put some budget towards it, and we're not even going to put money towards it, we're just going to put it into the budget potentially, that we're going to look at what the underground servicing is going to cost, so that when they do come to us next time, next year, spring, whenever, we say, okay, yeah, we know we found this issue, we found that issue, we know it's going to cost this much, is that going to work with your plan? And then they'll have some information, whereas if we just kick this down the road, we won't have that data. This is just data mining, that's all it is, we're just figuring stuff out. So I'm supportive of this. Yeah.
Mr. Strachan.
Your Worship, one of the biggest challenges, it's a challenge for you to professional planner, is size. Right? And the bigger the parcel, the more difficult it is to really wrap your mind around how it could be compartmentized. You lose yourself in the scale of things. And if nothing else, this plan gives you a sense of scale. And there's been a lot of misunderstanding with how this property is really configured as far as its size, and I'm hoping that this would actually not discourage the Housing Society, but actually give them something they can bite.